I will call to order the meeting for Wednesday, March 5th. May I have the roll call, please?
Mayor Allen?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Clayton?
Present.
Commissioner Kayler?
Present.
Commissioner Crowley?
Present.
And Commissioner Skidmore?
Present.
I would like to welcome everyone here in the audience as well as everyone watching or listening at home. We will begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by the invocation by potentially Commissioner Skidmore. Okay.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Robeson?
Psalms forty-six, ten and eleven. It says this, "Cease striving and know that I am God. I will be exalted among the nations. I will be exalted in the earth. The Lord of hosts is with us. The God of Jacob is our stronghold." Let's pray. Father in heaven, we give you thanks for that scripture, the truth of that scripture, that you truly are our sole source of security, not people, not governments, not money, but you alone, and how we can put our full faith and trust in everything that you do and say to us. And, Lord, we pray that tonight for our very meeting, as we yield to you for all the topics on this agenda, will work with us, guide us, direct us, our thoughts and our hearts to make the right decision. And we also, Lord, thank you for that last night's storm was not as severe as we might have thought. Still the same, we know that our workers were willing to go out into night if need be to restore any kind of damage or electricity that was out. We give you thanks for those workers, we're thankful for them, bless them and their families, and also bless our time together tonight, in Christ's name.
Thank you for that. We will move on to public comments. Do we have any registered? We have. We will skip item seven, as there is none. Item eight, consent agenda, which includes the minutes from February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five meeting, as well as the agenda approval. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Move on to item number nine. At this time, I'd like to give the commissioners a chance to declare any conflict or communication they've had that might influence their ability to consider today's issues impartially.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
On eleven E, I'm a contractor involved with that project, so I will abstain from any vote. I'm not going to recuse myself, though, just in case any of the commissioners have any questions that I can help answer.
Thank you for that. Seeing no other conflict, we will move on to, we'll skip item ten, which is unfinished business. We'll move on to item eleven, new business. Item eleven A.
Appointment to Kansas Municipal Energy Agency, KMEA, Board Director One Position.
The appointment is for a two-year term in the Director One position of the board, and City Clerk Reed will decide him.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. This evening, I am here to present the appointment to the KMEA Board Director One Position. As you recall, the governing body biannually selects representatives for the Directors One and Two Position. On March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four, David Hunsaker was appointed to the Director Two Position with a term expiring April thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. Our current representatives are Commissioner Kayler, whose term expires April thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, David Hunsaker, whose term expires April thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, and Jeff Olson as the permanent. As you recall, from the bylaws from KMEA, the Director must reside within the city's current electric territory or be a city employee. Directors serve a two-year term, with the exception to that as being the alternate, which may have a set term or be permanent. Each member has one vote, and Director One, if Director One is present, they will be voting. If not, Director Two or the alternative may vote. And Directors should attend the board meeting typically held in the spring and fall in Wichita. There are no financial impacts associated with this appointment, and the appointment is governed through the KMEA Article Five, Section five point one through five point seven. It's recommended that the City Commission deliberate and appoint a representative for the Director One Position. And I would stand for any questions.
Do we have any questions? And we have Commissioner Kayler, that has, as stated before, currently serving. I would be in service if, if so able, willing.
And I'm fine with that. I mean, and I've served for several years, and it's been an honor to serve on the KMEA Board, but I certainly will acquiesce to others who, you know, if they have interest in serving there, it's a wealth of knowledge.
The only question I would have, and I certainly agree with Commissioner Kayler continuing her term, or with her position, the only question I have is, I know your seat is up for reelection this year. If the possibility occurs, can we?
There's been vacancies before.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, when Commissioner, or when Director Tharp left, we filled his position. When, I mean, we've filled them before, when there's been vacancies.
That was my only concern.
The vacancy means that you just reappoint somebody.
Any other thoughts?
I mean, I, of course, I would say I would be willing to serve on, but I think Commissioner Kayler's done a great job. We'd be fine having her keep that role. I think she does a great job keeping us kind of informed after those meetings and what goes on at those things. So I would be in favor of her continuing that role.
Do we have a motion?
Oh, I will make a motion. Okay, sorry. I thought we were still discussing. I didn't. I will make a motion on item eleven A to approve, I guess, Sarah Kayler again, to serve as our Director One for KMEA.
Second, Ed.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Move on to item eleven B.
Request for Approval of GRDA Power Purchase Agreement Extension for Long-Term Energy Stability.
We have a request for consideration and approval of GRDA Power Purchase Agreement Extension, and that will be presented by Director Sneven.
Madam Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for having me up here once again, talking about all things electric. This is kind of a continuation of last week's conversation that we had about GRDA, and our recommendation today is going to be to review and acknowledge the current energy procurement structure and power supply agreements. It's recommended by staff to consider the approval of the purchase power agreement extension with Grand River Dam Authority, also known as GRDA, to secure twelve megawatts with an option to increase up to fifteen megawatts if available, for a twenty-five-year term from May first, twenty twenty-six through April thirtieth, twenty fifty-one. So, part one, we heard City Manager Salecott talk about the grid and what it means to our community and provides for us. Part two, I spoke on the infrastructure, what we have in place, our substations, our transmission lines, how many miles we have, how many poles we have. Part three was last week, when David Hunsaker talked about our portfolio, where we get our energy from and our sources, and how much we can generate. Part of that is that GRDA, GRDA, excuse me, resource that we have. At this, at last meeting, it was the consensus of the Commission to proceed with an agreement of twelve megawatts and up to fifteen megawatts if available. And what that up to fifteen megawatts if available means, that we are going into an agreement. This is just an agreement to say, hey, we are going to purchase power from you. The extension actually takes place next year at that expiration deadline. The if available, if we find ourselves in a good spot, we probably won't go for that fifteen megawatts, because it does take a little more funding to do so. But if we find ourselves needing more capacity, there's where we'll get it. So, again, part four is this extension. The current agreement ends April thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, so we have a year to really decide, twelve or up to fifteen, if it's available. The benefits are the long-term energy stabilities, the scalability, the cost-effectiveness, the minimal impact on customers, and renewable energy considerations. And when I say minimal impact to customers, for the average residential homeowner that uses approximately a thousand kilowatt-hours a month, it's seventy cents a month to renew this agreement with GRDA. Financial considerations, stable pricing, reduced exposure to market validity. It helps the city manage energy costs effectively, aiding in budget planning and keeping rates predictable for residents. Legal considerations, this conforms to all Kansas laws, with FERC and SPP ensuring full It is recommended that the City Commission deliberate approval of the recommended resolution to extend the purchase power agreement with GRDA, with the actions that follow. Recommend approval of resolution to extend GRDA purchase power agreement securing twelve megawatts with the option to increase to fifteen megawatts if available, ensuring long-term energy reliability and cost stability. Or recommend the item to be moved to a future City Commission meeting for further discussion and consideration. And with that, I will take any questions, and we do have Mr. Neil Daniel with KMEA here to answer any questions you may have for him as well.
Could you give us kind of a rough idea, what would happen next year when this expires, if we?
We have to have capacity somewhere. We have to get capacity. We don't have any other options.
We'd probably market, purchase it, or go through KMEA, find ways to purchase it that would not be as, more volatile, probably, as the expert in the room.
Bring him. Yeah.
Hey, Neil, come on up.
We could find the capacity. I don't think that would be an issue, but associated with the GRDA contracts comes a tremendous amount of energy, so that would be the major void, not only the capacity, but also be all the energy associated at those staple rates that Scott was talking about. So that would be my concern, is the energy market, in conjunction with the capacity market increasing and raising, the energy market has probably doubled in the last three to five years. So, having GRDA stabilizes both the capacity.
So, in layman's terms, Neil, it could cost a tremendous amount more.
Could, yes. This is the best, to extend this today, for the next, projected for the next seven, ten years, is the cheapest option, the least expensive option. I know you don't like the word cheapest. Least expensive option for our members. Thank you.
Director Sneven, the seventy cents per month that you were talking about for the typical residential user, that's in addition to what they're already paying, correct?
Yes, that would be the GRDA portion of the ECA.
And does that capture, last week, we talked about a three percent increase. Is that the same thing that we're talking about?
Yes.
Okay, just making sure.
Yes.
Thank you.
And I guess another question I've got is, if we can increase up to fifteen megawatts, and if this is our cheapest source of power, what would be preventing us from taking advantage of the fifteen and reducing somewhere else that's more expensive? I'm trying to think of the least-cost options we have here.
I think you get into a situation where you're paying for capacity that we don't use and don't need. We are in very preliminary talks about what our future looks like and planning ahead for our infrastructure, and, you know, with this twenty-five-year agreement, I think that gives us a little flexibility in to really get a good, strong plan moving forward.
Well, that's what I'm thinking with the expansion of the housing subdivision out by Price Chopper. That's me, what, it's twenties of thirty homes coming online here this year, and any other business operations that seem to be expanding and growing, we've got the capacity right now, obviously, to take care of these people, right?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Any other? I would just like to say, the presentations have been very informative. I watched the one last week while I was at the, but I did watch it, and it was, you did a great job, so thank you for those presentations, explaining exactly what is going on.
If I can continue on a little bit with what Commissioner Skidmore was just talking about, though, because we hear all the time about our housing shortage, and we have a housing study out there, and we're getting, Franklin County Development Council's coming up with a new one, but the one that we last received showed that we're a hundred houses short. Do we still have capacity for a hundred houses? It's a good problem to have. I mean, I want, but I, you know, there's, I mean, there's a lot of options out there that are coming up, you know, right down the, you know, and want to make sure.
Yeah, that's a good question. Where we're at right now with GRDA at twelve megawatts, we're what you call flat. We got what we need. We have no room for growth. If we get more houses, more businesses coming in, then we'll have to go out and have to purchase paper capacity to fill our needs. Other issues with just growth, not just growth, is performance-based accreditation that goes against our generators if they go down in the peak months, in the summertime and the wintertime. So that increases capacity needs. And then, of course, our competition with other energy users out there, fighting for the same thing. So this is a good opportunity. GRDA is letting us have the twelve megawatts that we already have, and then might have the possibility to get two, three more.
And Dave, could you clarify, or at least explain a little further, how we are long power but short capacity, and how this actually helps us with our capacity?
This GRDA does, yeah. It's basically for our capacity needs. It makes us a little long on energy, but there's a possibility we can sell off that energy and then make up that. But, yeah, capacity is needed. We're what you call flat right now. If we do not do GRDA, we have to go out and find that twelve megawatts of capacity, and like Mr. Danny said, then we have to go out and try to find the energy so we're not being exposed to the integrated market. That can get very expensive.
And that additional three megawatts would suffice quite a bit of houses.
Yes, yes. As houses, yes, yes.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions?
Madam Mayor?
Commissioner?
I'll make the motion that we approve item eleven.
Are you done with your? Okay.
Sorry. I'll make the motion we approve item eleven B on our agenda.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Do we have any other discussion? May we have a roll call vote, please?
How do you vote, Commissioner Crowley?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Clayton?
Yes.
Commissioner Skidmore?
Yes.
Commissioner Kayler?
Yes.
And Mayor Allen?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you very much. We'll move on to item eleven C.
A resolution accepting the public infrastructure improvements to Twenty-Third Street.
As part of the development of the Victory Dealerships on Twenty-Third Street, the developer has made improvements to Twenty-Third Street. These have been recommended by the city engineer for acceptance by the city, and Director Neese will be presenting.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor and Commissioners, for this opportunity. Before you is a resolution to accept the public infrastructure improvements to Twenty-Third Street. This is a project that, actually, I've, I'm glad to have been here for some time now, and this project predates me. It started in May of twenty twenty-three. The total cost estimate at the beginning was one point eight million for these improvements, and those costs have not gone through certification yet, so that's what, an amount that we'll work with as we discuss this. The work area, if I use the, the work area is roughly from the West Walmart entrance to the Rocket Creek Bridge on Twenty-Third Street, on the south end of town. These improvements have been completed by GB Construction, and then BG Consulting. The city engineer has certified its completion and readiness for acceptance as of December third, twenty twenty-four, by the attached letter that's in the packet. By accepting the infrastructure, the City Commission formally integrates the improvements into the city's public assets. You would be assuming responsibility for their future maintenance and operation. This, of course, facilitates enhanced accessibility and services for the Victory Dealerships, but it's also just broadly for the development of the community. Terms of financial considerations, did go ahead and break out, we've got about a one point five million for streets and stormwater, a hundred nineteen thousand for the waterline, and a hundred thirty-eight thousand for sanitary sewer. The public has participated in the cost of these improvements through both the tax increment financing district and the issuance of industrial revenue bonds, which provided a sales tax exemption for the total project, both the public and private improvements. And, of course, infrastructure carries with it the cost of maintenance into the future, but there are no direct costs at this time. Legal consideration, it has been reviewed by the city attorney and approved as deformed. So, the recommendation is that you would deliberate approval, and we have prepared a motion recommend approval of the resolution to accept public infrastructure improvements to Twenty-Third Street, or, you know, recommend that the item be moved to a future City Commission meeting if you need time to deliberate or desire more information. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for Director Neese?
I think it's a good example of how public-private partnerships work together to make something like this happen. I remember what that road looked like beforehand, and I was thankful they were willing to do this, and we were willing to work with them on this, because that would have been a terrible place to try to turn and navigate, but I think this is a great thing. I will make the motion we approve item, was eleven C on our agenda.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Can I have roll call vote, please?
Do you vote, Commissioner Kayler?
Yes.
Commissioner Crowley?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Clayton?
Yes.
Commissioner Skidmore?
Yes.
And Mayor Allen?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
We'll move on to item eleven D.
Review of Ottawa Memorial Auditorium Strategic Plan. Director Evans will present key initiatives from the Ottawa Memorial Auditorium Strategic Plan, focusing on branding and awareness, facility and infrastructure improvements, and community and stakeholder engagement.
Director Evans?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I am excited to be here tonight to talk to you about months of work that has been happening behind the scenes at the auditorium. The Ottawa Memorial Auditorium staff, the OMA Advisory Board, which you appoint, the Friends of the OMA, Mayor Allen, and Director Segment have all been a part of this strategic plan discussion. And this is for you to provide some input into tonight. We all came up with what we thought our goals and direction should be, but I'm interested to hear what you think after this presentation. The previous strategic plan for the auditorium was developed in twenty seventeen, shortly after I came on board. That plan outlined several goals, which we have steadily been working towards achieving. It had four themes, programming, facility upgrades, marketing, and fundraising. Our programming goal in twenty seventeen was to produce, present four shows that the OMA presents themselves. We do that pretty regularly now. Also, as a challenge, board members at that time said, hey, don't be afraid to ask the community for a higher ticket price and bring in some bigger shows. We've done that. Lone Star was, you know, a very big show for us, and we did break some barriers on ticket prices for the Ottawa community. As far as facility upgrades, we've knocked off a lot of those things, some audio/video equipment in the mezzanine, an electronic marquee, updating all of our stage lighting to all LED. We've replaced the screen and projector in the main hall. We've updated the concession stand. We've tinted the windows in the front lobby, which all seemed like little things or, you know, big things, but now it's like we've chalked off so many of those. There were some goals in twenty seventeen that we haven't necessarily accomplished as far as facility upgrades, including updating the lower lobby restrooms, which we budgeted for this year, and, you know, unless things happen, which we'll talk about later, maybe we'll get those done. A kitchen remodel is another big thing that, you know, is yet to be addressed, but it's still on that list. And then there's things that we accomplished in, as far as the facilities, that, you know, we maybe didn't have on that list in twenty seventeen. We replaced all the seats. We replaced all the carpet. We have cup holders. Everybody knows, that's my favorite thing. Removing of the orchestra pit, and so many things. As far as fundraising, in twenty seventeen, we didn't really have a membership or an annual fundraising ask that we had developed. We have that now. We have a membership that many of our businesses contribute to each year, and ranging from five hundred dollars to twenty-five hundred dollars, and last year we raised ten thousand dollars with that program. We've also developed a grant request plan and have secured the Shuttered Venue Operators' Grant, the Kansas Art Commission General Operating Grant, and some funding from the Franklin County Community Foundation. This new strategic plan is huge, as far as we go out and seek more and additional grant opportunities, because they all are asking what our goals are, what's our plan for the future. So this plays a big role in that. And then marketing was another goal in twenty seventeen. The things we listed were having regular Facebook videos, we do that, developing a monthly newsletter, check, consistent advertising on our local media, check, and a website update, which we did, and now it's time for another one. But overall, we've accomplished a lot of those things. So when we started meeting several months ago, three major themes emerged. Budget, how do we sustain and grow the OMA responsibly? Awareness, how do we make sure both local residents and regional audiences know what the OMA has to offer? And then viability, how do we ensure that the OMA remains a relevant financially-stable and valued community asset for years to come? Those three key themes helped us come up with the five focuses for this next strategic plan. Branding and awareness, rebranding and bringing marketing to ensure that OMA is known as not only an entertainment venue, but also a premier event center. It's important to me and our board members that the community knows that it is their community building. They can host family Thanksgivings, weddings, birthday parties, et cetera. We want them to use the auditorium for that. And this would help us develop a clear plan for long-term event scheduling. Taking advantage of additional marketing strategies is another idea in that branding and awareness. People change how they gather information every single day. Media changes every single day. So some of the things we're looking at are reaching out to some influencers and see if they'll help promote our space. Facility and infrastructure, tackling critical capital needs like ADA upgrades, a kitchen remodel, it's a common theme here, repairing our steps, and also exploring new technology investments, and just planning for future additional staffing. Revenue growth, expanding our funding mix by adding additional rental opportunities, we're thinking podcast rooms, recording studio space, more sponsorships, other grant opportunities, and looking at other programming opportunities as well, and leaning more towards an educational program, where we have camps and music lessons for the public. Community engagement, one theme that kept coming up over and over again is, how do we build a stronger tie with Ottawa University again? And you'll see some things this summer that will show you that we're working towards that. But other, engaging with more local businesses, more regional partners, including local concert promoters and regional concert promoters. And then a long-term vision, looking ahead, how do we position the OMA as a regional cultural destination, exploring ideas like outdoor performances, and looking for that one keynote OMA-hosted event that happens every year that the community knows is going to happen, like a car show or a tractor show that they look forward to? So by keeping budget awareness and viability at the center of each of these areas, we believe we can plan balances of ambition with fiscal responsibility. As far as legal and financial considerations, the OMA is a city-owned and operated facility, and we do receive a portion of our funding from property taxes allocated by the City Commission. Our goal is to leverage those public dollars as much as possible and pairing them with creative programming, rental concessions, outside grants, and corporate sponsorships to stretch our resources and pursue strategic priorities. That said, we also recognize that some of our capital improvement needs may, such as larger facility upgrades, may eventually require further discussion with the City Commission to be, you know, considered more in our capital planning process. So tonight, we're just asking the Commission to formally acknowledge this report, which reflects months- reflects months and months of collaborative work between our staff, our board members, and key community partners. And we'd also like to ask for your input on, did we miss anything? Are we in the right direction? So I am available for any questions.
And it was already just so, just before Zach asks, it was, we, it was asked that Taylor Swift perform?
Many times.
Many times. So that is off the list.
We're gonna have to work on Travis Kelsey to get her here, okay?
Yeah, I tweeted at him, I already tried.
Car show.
Do we have any questions?
Could you, on your event space, could you kind of highlight that? How many people can you guys hold if someone's wanting to rent the space?
Sure.
What kind of amenities in there do they get when they would rent the space?
Sure. So for the thing that people think about us the most probably is a performance space, right? Because we're an auditorium. Our auditorium holds 800 people, and when you rent the auditorium, you're getting full professional lighting, sounding, sound, technical staff. We can help with ticketing services, concessions bar. We, and we have people to do that, that rent the facility and let us manage their entire event. The basement exhibition hall, as we like to call it, can hold around 200 people comfortably. And you get tables, chairs, the kitchen, you know, it's there. But again, we can help with some event planning and decoration assistance as well. And then the mezzanine upstairs, comfortably, probably 20 to 25 people is a great meeting space, and we have lots of people that will rent it for that. We've had birthday parties, baby showers, et cetera, up there.
Thank you. Is the best way for that, to find you guys on Facebook, to email you?
Facebook, email us. On our website, we also have a rental button on the website where you can fill out a form that sends, shoots over to us, and then we reach out and talk to you about what your needs are then.
Thank you.
Tiffany, now that the Bottle House is sold, that could, basement could work, when you call it the event space?
Absolutely.
Could be utilized in that capacity. I didn't know what the numbers were. I think it's a great option anyway to consider for people, and I don't know how people will know to contact you. Is there any other advertising or contact that people at Bottle House will know? We can't accommodate you because we're sold, but perhaps the auditorium could be?
I will talk to Terry about that and see if they can help recommend us. And we try to include that in our newsletters, our, you know, our social media posts and such, but that's a great idea. Yeah.
Tiffany, I will tell you that your advertising is working. I did hear about your upcoming show on 97.7.
Awesome.
So not our local radio station, but another one.
And we have, we've tried to reach out to other radio stations. We advertise in the Johnson County Gazette, it's one of our biggest bangs for the buck. But we are happy to report that a lot of our patrons coming to shows anymore, a great amount of them are from Franklin County, but last year, we had 71 different ZIP codes of patrons that came to the auditorium. So it's pretty incredible.
Any other questions?
I just want to say, I think it's great that you mentioned in here kind of the recording studio and podcast stuff, you know, kind of the gateway into that. There's a lot of people who really want to do it. I think having a rental space, so people don't go out and try to blow, potentially blow, you know, thousands of dollars in equipment where they can come, they can use the space, and hopefully it's a little higher quality than they may have, and?
And we have technical staff that can help them as well, so.
And a ghost.
And a ghost.
And a ghost.
I appreciate your thorough report. Wow, you've gotten information there. So you did a lot of time spent on this, I know you did, and it's a great report, so thank you very much for providing that.
You know, I don't want it to be lost that, when I started on the Commission, the auditorium was, I was pulling up some annual reports from like 2013, where there were 56 rentals total. And I remember a number of strategic planning sessions that I was a part of, that we kept on saying, there's something with the auditorium, we've got to keep on putting our time and talent and treasure towards the auditorium. Not really sure what it is, but there's something there with the auditorium. And Tiffany, you've hit it out of the park for the last, you know, since day one, you've hit it out of the park. And thank you for helping to polish the auditorium to be what it could be. And I couldn't be more pleased with what you've done with the auditorium and how you've really made it shine. So thank you.
Well, thank you. I cannot take all the credit. We have such a great team. I mean, you all have been amazing supporters. City staff have helped me so much. And then we have an incredible, I am so blessed to have so many wonderful board members and volunteers that come in and work alongside of us and just as hard of us to be able to host 220 events a year, so.
I also do, on that one, to highlight that during, from 2017 to now, we've had COVID. And I remember attending 98-degree concerts outside.
Yes.
Because we weren't able to be inside, and while those were fun, you know, it's obviously hot, and so.
I love being inside.
Definitely props to that as well, kind of through that time, the growth you've had.
Thank you.
If there are no further questions, we'll acknowledge that, and while you're standing there, we'll move on to item 11E.
Approval of a Critical Repair at Ottawa Memorial Auditorium. This is a request for consideration and approval of a critical electrical repair at OMA.
So remember when I said we might do those basement bathroom, the lobby bathrooms this year? It just depends on if things like this happen, you know? The auditorium is an old building. It was built in 1919. It is an old building, and so there are failures that we experience from time to time. Tonight, we are asking for approval to proceed with replacement of our 1,200-amp electrical panel at the OMA, including custom panel fabrication and installation. The exterior 1,200-amp service panel is essential to the building's operation. We first discovered an issue in September of last year, when our four primary air conditioning units failed to power up, and we had just repaired them. And so, like, what's going on here? Through troubleshooting with BCI Mechanical and the City Electric Distribution Team, we found that a key component, the A-phase contactor, had failed, essentially melting due to heat and age-related stress. At that time, a temporary fix restored partial function, but this panel is past its useful life, and full replacement is necessary to ensure reliable power, especially during events. The temporary repair works under normal circumstances, but it's not sufficient for peak event loads when we have 800 people, all the air conditioners are running, we've got lots of sound and light equipment. The existing panel is also sold, that replacement parts are no longer available, making this more than just a repair. It's really a full modernization effort. And this is not just about convenience, it's ensuring that the building can function safely, reliable, reliably, when we have these big events. So after receiving the initial repair estimates, we did file a claim with our insurance provider to see if the incident would qualify for coverage. Due to the age of the equipment and depreciation, the insurance offer was only $1,400, which would leave the rest of the cost uncovered. We ultimately decided to withdraw that claim due to the low payout and proceed with other funding options. The total investment for materials and labor is $43,417.65, which includes a custom-built panel and installation. The thing is, is it takes about three months to get this done. The custom fabrication will take approximately three months, meaning that, you know, it's important to move forward, and then once that installation comes, we'll be down a couple of days while that's installed. So legally, there are no concerns. We'll ensure that everything meets or exceeds current safety and building code standards, but tonight, I am asking if you would consider approving, you know, this repair. And I am available for questions, but if they're about electricity, you might ask Commissioner Crowley.
Can somebody tell me about the, what is the date of the panel? When do we think the approximate date of the panel is, and how long it's?
I'm thinking, we're thinking the 70s when the remodel happened, in the mid 70s.
So in excess of 50 years?
Yeah.
Okay.
Exactly. Exactly.
And Commissioner Crowley or Director Sneethan, could you guys kind of, you know, 1,200-amp panels, people probably don't really understand what that is. For a typical home in Ottawa, that's equivalent to how many homes, would you say?
So your smaller homes typically have a 100-amp panel. Your bigger homes are 200. So you're anywhere from 12 to six houses.
So size-wise, that's part of the reason for cost and a custom panel and all of those increased costs.
Another consideration to that is your typical home is a single-phase service. This is a three-phase service, so you're actually three phases of 1,200 amps. So it's a pretty significant service.
Any other questions?
Well, it's not like it's a, it sounds like a need more than a, yeah, anything else that you've described to me. I have a feeling that the Advantage Electric bid probably is low. I have, I've known Commissioner Crowley for a long time, and when it comes to nonprofits like this, he's very generous on his giving attitude and giving heart, and so I know probably going somewhere else, that would cost a lot more than that. So I just want to thank Commissioner Crowley for that. But I'll make the recommendation, make the motion that we go ahead and approve this improvement for the auditorium. What is it, 11E on our agenda?
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any other discussion? May I have roll call vote, please?
How do you vote, Commissioner Skidmore?
Yes.
Commissioner Kaler?
Yes.
Commissioner Crowley's abstaining. Mayor Protim Clayton?
Yes.
And Mayor Allen?
And I'll vote yes. The motion carries. Thank you very much.
We'll move on to item 11F.
Resolution approving the City of Ottawa levy study. Consider a resolution to formalize the city's commitment to levy improvements in flood control and strengthening advocacy efforts for funding at the federal and state levels, and this will be presented by our city manager, Salkop.
Honorable Mayor and Commissioners, this will be relatively brief. As you know, we have a, several stormwater system and flood control projects identified in our capital improvement project, capital improvement program. Most of our stormwater projects would improve flow and efficiency, which means that we are moving more water at a higher rate of speed, so we're increasing volume and velocity to our pumps that are original to our levy system, that are already inundated with some events that have occurred recently, with the most recent significant event being in 2019. This is a brief overview of our levy system. We have a north bank, or a right-hand and a left-hand bank, with the right-hand being the south side, which is what we can see here, out by the cemetery, and along and right out beside City Hall here. So it is the south bank. And when you see the left-hand bank, or the left bank, that is the north bank, which is in place for not only the Meridaseen, but also Wilson Creek. And the purpose of levies is to not only keep the Meridaseen waters out, but to also process the floodwaters in these basins that flow this way. And what these little lines are, are significant points in the levy system, whether those are control valves, or pumps, or other appurtenances that help in assist with moving water from this side of the levy into the riverside of the levy for flow downstream. And they're essentially two separate purposes. So we have something on the north side that's for its purpose, and something on the south side for that purpose, and they share the common purpose of trying to keep the Meridaseen rivers out. So we have a total of just over four and a half miles of levy space. And what you see here is our average height on the north levy is being 19 feet and 15 feet at the south levy. So there are, as of 2023, with the Corps of Engineers assessments, over 2,134 citizens residing in this immediate footprint that you see in the shaded area. And you can tell that our south bank is obviously the longer of the two, at just over three miles. So we're fortunate that we've never had an overtop event, meaning the floodwaters from the Meridaseen rising to such a point that it exceeds the top of the levy. But we have, on one occasion, reached 75% of that height, and I have broken that down into feet in the agenda report for you, and many times at 25%, and occasionally at 50%. And those levy systems protect $256 million worth of property contained within that blue, and just over 1,029 buildings, which make up that 256. There's also 13.8 acres of farmland, most of which is a double crop of winter wheat and soybeans. So it really assists in what is vital to our local economy, but also our quality of life. And as we know, when our pumps are inundated with inflow, as you've seen in the attachments of the agenda report, they're not able to keep up. And that's because they are the original 1962 design, and the electrical in those pumps are, again, original to 1962, and that also revealed that we had certain deficiencies, not only with the capacity of our pumps, but also with the interior drainage and underseepage. And so we had applied for and qualified for 100% funding. However, federal programming and funding requires, priorities changed, and that stream is no longer available. And so now, we are pivoting, and funds that we were looking to apply for engineering are needing to be redirected for the study. And with the study now, that would be a 50/50 cost share, and we would need to look at doing that, potentially in phases. And we are also potentially capped, so that we can be competitive as to how much we're actually going to be asking for. And with that, we're asking for the study to evaluate the condition and effectiveness of our existing drainage and levy system. And we already know that the tow drains have either collapsed, or were never properly installed, because we cannot get even television cameras and sewer cameras down through them. We're asking for an assessment of our interior drainage issues and the underseepage concerns, which is not only the tow drains, but what's the subsurface composition of that base that's holding up the levy system? So that way, it's, you know, it's the Goldilocks, it's not too firm, it's not too soft, it's just right for what we need. And also to identify modifications and a long-term approach for the system to match not only our current, but our future needs as well. So all this resolution's doing is affirming the city's commitment for levy improvements and flood control, and also strengthening our advocacy efforts for advocating for funding at federal and state levels. So it's essentially saying that, yes, this is a priority for us. We take flood control and levy systems as a strategic priority, and reinforces our commitment in these assets and infrastructure pieces, protecting the lives of property and the public infrastructure. And that, we're requesting the federal and state funding efforts to continue through the Missouri River Council, and we are a member of that. And the Meridaseen was one of the original founding river basins for that in the 1950s. Also, obviously acknowledging and accepting the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers' levy, safety and inspection policies, and also that it's essential in having a resilient system that can mitigate flood risk. It's essentially an administrative action that we're asking you to do, so that we can be competitive when we approach the Corps of Engineers for the funding, and also to look at congressionally designated spending, so that it can be potential. so that it could be potential assistance in this. We were planning on that eventually, but for the costly improvements. And it's not just something that we're facing. Kansas City, Kansas, and Kansas City, Missouri have a Fairfax drainage basin that obviously splits Kansas City, both in Kansas and Missouri. And they have the exact same problem. And there was bipartisan support from both Kansas and Missouri, both senators and congressional representatives in that district to support project, a large project to fund the construction of that. And so eventually, we'll also be asking them for assistance in that. But it's essentially to help us be competitive with the Corps as we're having a reduced pot of money. And it is now also more competitive, and the cap has been significantly reduced to less than 300,000. And so we are now obviously needing to split that up as we go forward, asking competition. This is one of the things that we would like to put in our portfolio. It would be recommended that you adopt the proposed resolution to formalize our commitment to levy improvements and flood control and to direct staff to advocate for efforts for funding at federal levels. That's about it.
I got a question. On the 13.8 farm acres, where is that located? Is that city-owned or is that just?
No. Well, some of it would be, but essentially, if you look, it's predominantly out in here. And it's also in the flood plain. So if you go out by the cemetery.
Yes.
And you look, and also out where the dam is located, all of that is in that footprint.
I didn't think any.
And I meant to include a photo, because we do, and it's included in one of the images. That's a nice shot from 2015, looking back down the river. And you can see those farm fields there that are inundated.
And, all right, and we rent that out, or is that city-owned property?
It's not all owned by the city.
Yeah, it's not all.
It's privately owned.
It's private. Okay, I thought, I wasn't sure on that. What, and then the 700,000, what would that get us exactly?
It would get us the study, or the three parts.
Just the study?
So we have, essentially, there's three parts to this problem. We have the study that would be required for the assessment. And then, once that study's completed, we then move to engineering to mitigate the issues. And then we would need to work on actually constructing those.
That would take all three phases?
So we're looking at, yes, what would have been a seven-to-10-year plan, we're now looking, and that's fast-track. We would now be looking at a 10-to-15-year.
Okay, all right. Now, the Corps does inspections now on the levies, right?
Yes.
How long, is that every couple of years?
It's periodic. And our last inspection, I believe, was the detailed site inspection. They do different levels, and the most detailed, I want to say, occurred in 2021.
Okay. And those inspections aren't necessarily what the same thing is that we're talking here.
Correct. This is an engineering assessment.
Totally different. Okay, that's what I wanted. Now, is the Corps a state or a federal agency?
It is a federal, and it's the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers.
Okay.
And our engineering officers would not only do their rotation where they're, you know, in Europe or Afghanistan, or wherever we're at at that point in time, but then as part of their career track, then rotate back through and serve a period of time where, say, an infantry or aviation officer may be at the Pentagon for a period of time. These guys go and serve at the Corps of Engineers and do projects like that. And there's also civilian sites.
Mr. City Manager, great report. There's a lot of information in here. But I think the most valuable information, at least to me, is I've lived here 45 years, and I never knew it was called Wilson Creek. I swam in it. I just never knew it was called Wilson Creek. So, thank you for that information. I do appreciate that.
Of course.
I've lived here longer than that.
Did you know?
Well, exactly, where is Wilson Creek? Is that behind Forest Park?
Yes, and it's on the, on the left-hand side of the levy here. But you can't really see it because of the color, but it kind of moves like this.
I think it comes off Wilson Street, I'm guessing, is that?
I think the Statue of Libertations is probably worn out on that, so I'm just, you're not really supposed to swim there.
Oh, I think so, okay.
City Manager Silkott, in the presentation, there's some photos from when we had an event, I think it was 2019 now, when there was flooding. Can you kind of allude to what was the potential cause of that issue and how that can relate to the potential of the?
And there was some, but it wasn't as extensive on this side. But these two pumps right here, there was so much water that they just, they could not keep up. And again, it gets back to the fact that it was a 1962 design, and the impervious surface, or in other words, the amount of pavement and buildings that have occurred is much more. And it now, not to mention things that flow down this way, because it all flows from essentially up at Wilson down. All of that's flowing this way. So, you know, there's a lot of dynamic and very detailed things that we just don't even really think about that have a knock-on effect, almost like the butterfly flapping its wings in Tokyo is causing earthquake in Seattle kind of thing. And it's the same way on the south side here. And we are fortunate that we exercise our gates and advertise it that is to let folks know that we're not, you know, resting on our laurels. This is something that is strategically important. And it is, as residents of Ottawa, we know that it is directly attributed to our quality of life and our safety. As we know, a lot of the early deaths in the pre-18, even into the early 1900s, were sudden floods that occurred as the Meridaseen came up overnight. And it was things that particularly in the 1850s, 60s, and 70s, homesteaders had never really seen that. And so entire families and farm buildings were wiped away. And these levy systems that we have here in Osawatomie and on down save lives. It's very expensive, which is why it's a federal issue. And as Commissioner Skidmore pointed out, it is another example tonight of different stakeholders coming together for a common purpose and a collective.
And that event, was it 2019? That was a very rare event, too. I believe we had someone report 11 inches of rain north and west of Ottawa. It all came at once, seemed like. And so that was a very unusual situation. But since that time, and are we prepared for that to happen again? I think we've purchased some Tiger pumps, if I remember right. So if this does happen again, can you tell us their plan of action?
And we're also reaching out to our local Corps office to see if we could get some short-term solutions as well that we might be able to utilize. Because, you know, I want to say that we have the ability to mobilize, and we do operate pumps and are, in fact, as you know, we have sent notices out when we've had significant rain events, that we have our crews out and they're checking. And so that way, you're aware of the frequency in which our folks are actually not just checking, but their eyes on, and we're all checking those various locations to make sure that they're keeping up. And I don't want to jinx this, but we are responding, and we hope that those aren't needed.
You have any other questions? You'd like to proceed?
Madam Mayor?
Commissioner?
I'll make the motion that we approve item 11, 11F on the agenda.
We have a second.
A second.
Any other discussion? May I have roll call vote, please? How do you vote, Mayor Protem Clayton?
Yes.
Commissioner Skidmore?
Yes.
Commissioner Kayler?
Yes.
Commissioner Crowley?
Yes.
And Mayor Allen?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. That'll move us on to item 12, which are comments by our city manager.
And this will be brief, because I, after this slide, we stuck the last weeks as opposed to what we prepared this week. So I will just review what we have going on at the OMA, including our cultural breakfast on March 26th. And March 8th here, coming up, we'll have Thunder Road, which will be the Bruce Springsteen. And then, of course, our Elton John birthday and the Mona 2 movie. So, we're still accepting volunteers. And we have current employment opportunities at the street department, police officers, golf course, and our seasonal. So, we're always looking for employees. So if, where, I think we are in the process of filling, particularly the golf course. So, it'd be finalized and finished. I believe, too, we'll be making an announcement as well for our part-time mechanic and coordinating with the high school. Potential opportunities to help leverage that down-to-gain program. And with that, we have some tentative agenda items coming up for our March 19th meeting. Our finance report, active capital project review. We'll also be opening our taxiway bids tomorrow at 10:00 or 10:30. And we'll have those presented for your review and award. The resolution for our cemetery rates, the nuisance mowing bid award, and a review for our electric rate. And that concludes my report. If there's nothing for myself or another member of our team.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to item 13, comments by the governing body. We'll start with Commissioner Kayler.
None at this time.
Commissioner Crowley?
No comment.
Commissioner Skidmore?
No report.
Mayor Protem Clayton?
I will follow suit. I won't keep us here. I won't filibuster an everfall.
And I have none either, so we'll move on to announcements. We have March 12th, the city commission meeting at 4:00 PM has been canceled. March 19th will be our next meeting at 10:00 AM here at City Hall. Then March 26th at 4:00 PM.